Okay. Good evening and welcome to the 6:00 PM Special City Council Meeting. All council members are present. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair White.
Thank you. Please rise if you are able. Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to observe a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Do we have any acknowledgements from the council?
I have one, Chair.
Yes.
I should have done it in the work session, but I really wanted to thank so much several members of the staff, met with me and a couple of community members at Lester Park this week to talk about, you know, some of those things we were talking about in the work session, the programming of the park, and just to really clarify, you know, when neighbors can have certain kinds of meetings in the park that are publicized in certain ways and when they reach the level of having like a special event that they need to apply for. So I just really appreciate the administration and all of those staff members who attended. And like I said, I should have said it in the other meeting because they're all appear to be gone now, but I might just really appreciate that mayor and mayor that they were willing to come to the park. We sat on a park bench or a park table in the middle of the park and talked about it, and they really appreciated that time of the staff. And honestly, there was just a couple of miscommunications because it was just a long email chain of correspondence. And so there was a lot of things clarified just by having that in-person meeting, and it was nice to have everybody there at one time because then we weren't all doing a telephone game either. So I really appreciate that from the staff, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have approval of minutes from the work session of August 6th, 2024, Councilmember Trabberka.
Yes, Chair, I've read those and they are correct to my recollection.
And the regular meeting of August 6th, 2024, Councilmember Graff.
Yes, Chair, I've reviewed them and to the best of my recollection, they're correct. Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Graff and a second by Councilmember Trabberka to approve the minutes. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Okay, we have a consent item for the Ogden Diversity Commission appointment.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent item listed in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Trabberka to approve the consent item. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I noticed that new commissioner is in the audience.
Yeraceli.
Yes.
Yeraceli, welcome. Thank you for being willing to serve on the commission.
Thank you.
All right. And it's, yeah, let's do a clap on that. There we go. Thank you. We should always, yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. Up next, we'll invite Linda Lartigue from the Community Engagement Administrator, or the Community Engagement Administrator from the mayor's office up to present on the proposed amendments to the Diversity Commission ordinance and proposed joint resolution adopting Community Engagement Charter.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Ritchie and members of the council, and thank you for allowing me to join you today. Before you, you have the proposed amendment to the Diversity Commission ordinance to rename the Diversity Commission to the Community Engagement and Opportunity Commission. This is to make some technical changes to align the commission's procedures with other city committees and to also ultimately comply with House Bill 261. You also have before you the proposed joint resolution to adopt the Ogden Community Engagement Charter, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Oh, no, I don't have any questions.
Comments?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you so much, Linda, for working through this process and, you know, working with us to understand the changes and why they had to be made and obviously legal as well and others, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, yeah, and I just want to echo that. I appreciate the discussion we've had over the last few months as we've been talking about this. I think it might, it's important to note that the, there's no language that's been changed in the Charter. It's the same charter, which goes to maybe underscore the thought that went into it originally, some of the uniqueness of Ogden that I think we ought to always celebrate in the ability to come together on this type of a thing. And so I'm excited to take part in this.
Thank you.
One, I just had a technicality that I noticed, too, and just as a note, I noticed that in the other memo we had that it said that two commissioners would continue serving after their term had lapsed. But with the adoption of this ordinance today, what happens, I noticed one commissioner would be out of compliance with that. So would that person just automatically be removed or?
No, so we had two individuals that had completed the maximum amount of time that they could serve on the Diversity Commission, and they both very graciously decided that they would stay on until they were replaced, one of which was being replaced with the appointment of Ms. Warner. And the other person had some really great personal things happening, more specifically a trip abroad with his wife, and so he asked to be done with his time.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have that issue. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that because I would feel bad if they thought they were going to continue serving and they couldn't.
Thank you, Vice Chair White.
And I just, I want to make a comment because, you know, when I first understood what was coming down from the legislators and with the Senate bill, it really bothered me, to a point where I was, I think I used the word pissed off, I think, in our last work session. But as I've been able to be around our council, this administration, and what we're doing today to, just to really say that this is really important and, you know, we've done the technicalities of what we needed to do, it's given us opportunity to change the ordinance, and actually maybe even expand and broaden and being able to be even more diverse and inclusive in what we're doing. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to see a light as opposed to just really being mad. So thank you and your group for, not your group, but our group for helping me through that process. So thank you.
Absolutely.
I know we'll vote on both of these and I won't get to do that comment, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair, if I might.
Yes.
I was one of the two council members that worked on the committee that worked for about three years on the Diversity Charter and, you know, all of the underlying issues that we were trying to address. And it was a labor of love for everybody that participated. It was long, it was enlightening to, I think, everybody, you know, that because we understood that we don't all see things through the same lens and some of those kind of things. And that, and the intention, at least from what I was able to glean from that process, was everyone's value and ability to bridge people's understanding and so that we didn't isolate ourselves and we didn't create a lot of tribalism and things of that nature. And so I was, and I reread this thing when the Senate bill was being discussed, and I thought, you know, there's nothing in there that's being affected, at least it hasn't changed my mind about why we came up with the Diversity Charter as it is written and why those values still don't apply. I'm a little different than my two colleagues. I did see that there was some negative aspects to the way diversity, equity, and inclusion was being used. Not that there was anything inherently wrong, but the way it was being used in many cases was kind of negative and which is why I assume that the legislature addressed it. But I'm happy that we're here today and get to have a review of the Diversity Charter and what it means to Ogden, and hopefully we can go forward and put some of those negative aspects in the past and move forward and build those bridges.
If I could, just say, I think the fact that we were able to get to this point with the only real substantial change being made to the Diversity Charter being its name to now be the Community Engagement Charter, I think that speaks in volumes to the DEI work that we were doing here in our city. We, I think, the bulk of my work and the bulk of the work of the commission, it truly has just been community-centered from the beginning, and I think that's why you see very little changing right now, you know, as we're kind of facing House Bill 261, is because of the fact that everything that we've been doing really truly has been for the greater good of our community and not so much those divisive areas.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And I just also wanted to just recognize your leadership in this whole process and thank you for your work in that. I don't, I didn't see him, but I don't know if Fernando's here. He's unable to make it tonight, but I also feel like his leadership involved in this was really instrumental in helping us come together on this. I just wanted to highlight one sentence out of this. It says, "In signing this document, community elders, current leaders, and hopefully young people will commit to come together as many times as it takes." I think that's cool that was in there, especially if setbacks occur. And while some maybe feel like this was a setback or maybe not, I think we're committed to be at the table, and that's phenomenal. Mayor, this is a joint proclamation or joint endeavor. I didn't know if you had any comments or would like to take some time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually really appreciate that. Thank you, Linda, for not just your presentation, but your leadership in this work, but also your, what you've done for me and how much listening you've done for me, but also how much you've taught me and that we continue to learn from each other. I think that's really important because I think that's what's often been lost, and I think it's been lost on this topic because this is just my personal opinion. You can take it for what it's worth, but I am the mayor, so I hope it's worth something that our nation and our world right now has become far too focused on one or the other, me against you, us against them, left versus right. We are not all demons. There's a lot of really, really good people in this world. Every single person at this dais has got a good heart, they've got good intentions, they want to help, they want to serve, they serve with love. Whether you believe that or not, it does exist. And the same can be said with all of the people that we serve. Now, I know there are people out there that have ill intentions. We all run upon them. But in this world right now, there's a lot of ill intentions in politics, especially partisan politics. It is the height of the season right now, tonight, in 40 minutes, right? And what gets lost in that are the people. What's lost in our future and in our country is our service to one another. There's a reason that local politics is not partisan. It's not partisan because we are tasked and responsible for serving people, people that have a D or an R or nothing in between or an I, whatever it is. And the same can be said for whatever church you pray in, whatever nation you come from, whatever abilities or disabilities you may have. If you live in this city, we as elected officials are responsible for serving, loving, and caring for you. It's our jobs. Politics has really made it hard for us to do that. Now, there's a lot of talk about unity, and I have, through my reading, including the books that you've sent me on my family vacations to read, have taught me that unity does not mean we agree. It is totally okay to disagree. But what unity ought to mean is that we seek to understand and that we also understand that we are rooted in love and service for one another and that most people are good. I remember my humanities teacher in seventh grade, we had a lecture about, is man inherently good or inherently evil? Of course, there's discussion on both sides, but I was raised to believe that men and women and mankind are inherently good until proven otherwise, and I refuse to believe otherwise. So we can put whatever letters on it we want, we can assign blame to whoever we feel we wish, we can demonize the other side, but all that does is it makes us further apart. And the space between my hands right now are the literal cracks that people are falling in between. I will not stand for it. I won't be your mayor and let it happen without trying. There are families and children in this city falling through the cracks right now because we are fighting over politics. Quite a thing to say from an elected official who's a politician, isn't it? But we are supposed to be a community. We are supposed to be different. We are supposed to be better. These are not political values, these are human values. If anybody reads this charter, doesn't agree with it, they don't need to be at the table because they're in the way. They're adding to the divisiveness and creating space between my hands and further cracks for people to fall through. If you have a conscience, if you have an ounce of humanity, please look to one another and love one another and find a way to serve. If we don't put our own people in every corner of every neighborhood in this city to work and the opportunities that we're creating, they will be replaced. Or we can sit back and let politics do what it wishes. Certain people will find themselves in power, one party over another will win, and in that scenario, we lose. I'm asking and hoping, I'm begging, and every day I pray for a different way and a different outcome. For me, that charter represents the values that I believe in, that I hold dearly, that I was taught to lead with and to love. It's the reason that I'm here. If it doesn't work, if I'm Pollyannaish, so be it, but I won't change. I'm here for you. I'm here for all. I hope you'll join me because it's damn lonely in the middle right now. It's damn lonely. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. We have two action items. We can, let's go ahead and take these separately. So entertain a motion on the first one.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2024-27.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Myers to adopt proposed ordinance 2024-27. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Trabberka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Hare.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Vice Chair White.
Aye.
Chair Ritchie.
Aye. That passes. And the next proposed joint resolution, 2024-3.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-3 also.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed joint resolution 2024-3. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Trabberka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Hare.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair White.
Aye.
Chair Ritchie.
Aye. And that passes. All right. Up next, we have a ceremonial signing, and I do want to recognize, I do see Brenda, I'm going to mess up the last name, Kowaluski?
Kowaluski.
All right. From Weaver State, welcome being here. I don't know if we have any others from OTAC or school districts at all, and we also have a lot of community members here as well, so welcome. Thank you for being here. I couldn't see you at first, Brenda. Anyway, you're hiding there. So how do we want to do this? Just head on down and?
Let's have the elected officials sign first, and then there are areas for everyone else that would like to sign, to sign on that second sheet.
All right, so we have, yeah.
Chair, also, I was going to mention it, but I forgot. My brain is not, it's got holes in it these days, but Neil Garner was also the other council member that spent that time on that committee.
Oh, okay.
And so I just wanted to give him some credit for going through that process, too.
Yep. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, let's get, like, there are spaces for the elected officials to sign, and then anyone else who would like to come up and sign. I think, yeah, let's get the charter up here and then everyone.
I'll take a picture afterwards if you all want to.
How are you? Get a big group shot. Get a big group shot, yeah.
How you doing, buddy? Yeah, good to see you.
We need to do it again. Are you still in Salt Lake?
No, no.
After here.
How are you?
Hello, Scott.
That's right.
You're Scott?
I didn't wear my plaid tie on.
What year did you graduate?
He's just a kid.
I graduated in 94, so I'm even more of a kid.
You are more of a kid.
I graduated in 91.
You graduated in 91.
Right here, these two.
Yeah.
The little one?
I love the Easys crab.
Tell you. I'm trying to think. Who graduated in 92? Keith was 92?
He was 92.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one of those.
Who'd my oldest graduate? You are the best. Thanks. Oh, thank you. Thanks for being here today. Yeah, let's talk. Let's talk tomorrow. That'll be good. You know, I think.
I mean, I guess I just would hear from my staff as to, because I don't, I don't like those newer assistants. It's so suggestive. Just know that if I didn't do a very good job, you wouldn't be here.
I know. That's exactly what I was going to say. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here. Good to see you.
High five.
I used to, it used to roll off my tongue.
Brenda, thanks for being here. Oh, I'm sure you have.
Where you just have to, you just supplement work. You just have to be there.
One big light. How are you?
Doing good. Doing great.
Yeah, yeah, things are good.
Hey, before anybody leaves, before anybody leaves, we'd like to get a picture with those who are here that have hung around. I think we have just a couple more to sign, and then we're going to bring the documents here, and then just all of us just kind of gather around, and then we'll rely on Brandon, who I learned a new nickname for him. I'm not going to share it here. You have to go to the Playhouse, the Terrace Playhouse, and you'll hear a new nickname for him. It has to be. It has to do with a hulking French.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you go there. Okay. Did you get the picture I sent?
No.
Okay, I'll send it to you. There's a couple, anyway. But, yeah, so we've got just a couple more signatures. So, let's just all come on up here. If you just gather up in front of Mayor and Councilmember Blair in this space here, we'll just kind of come behind you. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Mayor, before we move off this topic, Mayor just had a quick comment also.
Yeah, well, I want to thank everybody for, that came tonight, but also, I got some, a lot of personal correspondence of people that were wanting to be here tonight but couldn't make it. And so, we thought it'd be nice to leave the signing document in the Recorder's Office, which is if you enter into the front doors of the municipal building and turn left. So, just go up the stairs, go into the front doors, turn left, the Recorder's Office is there. That's where we have HR and everything. We thought we'd leave the signing document there for anybody who missed the opportunity to sign tonight, who also wants to add their name in an important moment in history for our community.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have public comments. At this point, at this, this point of the meeting, this is an opportunity to address the council regarding any topics or concerns or ideas. We ask that everyone be considerate of those in the meeting, and also by limiting their comments of three minutes. And please state your name for the record. And what looks like we have one hand online, so we'll go ahead with that first, and then if anybody else in, in the room would like to come up after we listen on this one.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Happy Tuesday, Ogden City Council. My name is Tiana Ruttanga and an Ogden resident. And I just have been listening to work session leading up to the city council meeting, and just wanted to give my gratitude to all of you for all of your work. It's really cool to see individuals from different opinions, and maybe even opposing opinions come together and still try to carve out something beautiful. I specifically wanted to give my gratitude to Councilman, oh, my, my brain just went blank, Myers, sorry, for just your thoughts in relation to the, to Councilman Graff's initiative. I, I just appreciate someone always bringing in a new lens and perspective. I worked at the library for almost four years, and the park was a great concern to the library and to the function of the library for many reasons. And so, anyways, I just appreciated you taking maybe not the popular opinion there and just, just to bring for consideration. I also wanted to speak tonight just to also ask what I can do better as an ordinary citizen. My goal is to strengthen the civic engagement of the ordinary citizens here in Ogden. And I don't know what I'm doing. I am fairly new to the city council arena, and just trying to figure things out, what staff to talk to, what, what to, how to navigate the website. There's so much on the website, and so I just wanted to, I want to ask that every week because I feel like there are ninety thousand other plus people who don't know what's going on, and I would love to have them participate in some way, shape, or form. So, if you have any ideas of how I can better perform, sorry about my dog, as a ordinary citizen, I would really appreciate that. Also, if you could please tell your Instagram person, thank you so much for the videos that he makes. There are more than just two people who are watching them. Please give him some kind of raise, and don't stop making them because they're helpful for me. And anyways, just please continue to consider how to engage your neighbors and your constituents. I love what Mayor Nadolski said about coming together. That's my jam. That's a cause and battle that I will always get behind. And anyways, thanks for, thanks for your work today and, and in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. It looks like another hand online. Let's go to that.
Good evening.
Hello.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Wonderful. This is Emily Beely, Ogden resident, and thank you so much for just being able to attend the work session. That was really informative, and I just wanted to share something that I learned today that was so exciting on the Ogden City website, and it's under the city council area, and it's the Citizen Information Packet. I'm sure you, council members, are familiar with it, but I've never seen it before, and it was such a wealth of information. Thank you so much for putting that together. It is a great place to start, and I just don't know exactly, how exactly I found it, but I would love for that to be on the front, you know, on the homepage of ogdencity.com because that document is fantastic. So, I very much appreciate that. And then there's a couple other just events that I want to mention, just because I have the opportunity. One is a town hall type event for Senator Johnson and Jason Kyle, who do represent much of Ogden City. This particular event is going to be held in Huntsville, and it's this Thursday, the 12th, at 6:30 at the Huntsville Library. And then there's another event coming up on September 18th, which is featuring some school board members. And I understand that the county school board member in attendance won't represent any Ogden residents, but the state board member, Mr. Joseph Carey, he's gonna be there at 6:30 at the Roy Library. And so, this is just, both of these events are just opportunities for constituents to interact with their elected officials and have more of a dialogue, which I hope is something we can have soon in Ogden regarding the new budget. So, that is something that hopefully we can get scheduled that can be just right near Lester Park, the main library, and we can involve more citizens to engage and to understand the process and what to expect and the benefits that are gonna come from the property tax increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Okay.
In the Capitol. My name is Marcus Carr. My organization is Growing Unified Development, and Mayor Big Ben is right. I've been at the Capitol, and I've seen some things that, you know, our state is at a great divide, and we have to worry about Ogden City. I don't want to take too much time. I've been there, and I know the mess. I was there, and I agree with you. But I also am here on the behalf of seeing the statistics, seeing how our city is, and we have to be better with each other. This political warfare, it's coming to a head where it is devouring our citizens, and that is the truth. And we have to start having better communications and better relations with each other, from our grassroots organizations, to our state leaderships, to our city leaderships, that we have to be better with each other as a state. This is Utah, and there is gonna be tones here, and both sides are not gonna be happy. But there's a time where we have to be purple-minded, and we have to come together and do the right thing for this city. And that's why I moved back here, to join that coalition with the mayor and, and the good people of Ogden City growing up here. And so, that's what I just wanted to say, that, you know, I agree with the mayor a hundred percent. This, this political divide all the time is hurting our children, and it is hurting our citizens. And from someone that's been at the Capitol for three years, to see this and witness this, it's a terrible situation, but we don't have to be that way. We can be better with each other, and like you said, we can be united, but we may not all agree. So, what I learned in argumentative, argumentative and debate is called a fair shake. That means that neither side can't be happy, and we gotta do what's right for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. I appreciate that, a lot of positive words. Appreciate that encouragement. Thank you, thank you for that. I think there is a lot of good things going on, and to answer Tiana's question, I don't know what the, the best answer is on a week-by-week basis, other than maybe staying engaged and, and being involved and asking questions. And I do think you do a lot of good things in the community. I've seen you in, in that. So, yeah, any, anybody have any ideas? Councilmember Chaburka, it looks like, maybe on strengthening civic engagement?
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with you, Tiana. And, you know, my phone number and everything is totally available. You can call me, or you can reach out at the council email at angela chaburka at ogdencity.com. I'd be happy to talk with you a little bit. I mean, it is a learning curve, honestly. I think maybe the new council members might have more of a fresher perspective on that, but it definitely is a challenge sometimes to understand how things work. And I know that one of our goals, as I've been on council, has definitely been to try to make it more accessible in any ways that we can see fit. But we'd love, you know, we appreciate any feedback, too. I think we try to take that into consideration, so we'd be happy to help.
And I think, I think with that, this isn't a great forum for discussion, like this meeting itself. It's great to hear public input and to, and to hear those thoughts and ideas, and, but it's not necessarily a dialogue-type of an environment. And so, please feel, we hope that you feel like you can reach out to council members. We, our phone numbers, our email addresses are posted online. I've taken personal meetings with constituents as well, and I know others have as well. So, there's a lot of opportunities to engage. This isn't our full-time job, so we do have to be mindful of that and respectful as well. But I think there are other opportunities beyond, beyond this meeting, so.
Chair, there's also lots of committees that the city uses people for, Christmas Village, landmarks, trails, planning commission.
Community Engagement Commission.
Yeah, lots of, lots of different, different committees that, that we really need to have people get involved in. So, that's a, that's a good place to start, and, and engage in your own little communities, you know, in an informal way, and, and talk about what's going on, and then, and then connect with one of us as council members. Councilmember Chaburka, she offered her, herself for direct communication, and I also am, am elated when people call. So, you can find us all on the council's webpage. It's, all our contact information is there.
Yeah, and, and the committees, you can sign up online to, there's a place on the website where you can sign up to, or apply online to, to those committees, so.
Is that set up already for our new committee, or is that the same process? Or the, I'm sorry, I have to look at, the Ogden Community Engagement and Opportunity Commission?
The CIOC.
What was the original question? Was, how do you apply for it? Is it the same process?
Yeah, because I was talking about all the boards and commissions, and I was just wondering if there was an application for that.
Yep, application online.
Because we are looking for new members, right?
In fact, with, with the last member, we had, it wasn't an interview, but it was like a get-to-know-you, and Araceli's gonna do a great job for us.
So, did she apply through the form online? Cool.
All right. Okay. And, yeah, with that, any comments from Mayor?
I made a lot of comments tonight, so I'll let them stand, but also, just to say thanks to those that came, those that dared to show up, dared to speak. I think we need more of that, and I, I still do have a lot of hope for our city. I think diversity needs to be our strength, and if we don't do it right, diversity is gonna be our downfall, if we, if we keep fighting with each other instead of fighting for each other. So, thank you to everyone who wants to stand up and, and fight for one another. That's what strong community does. I don't want to build a city, I want to build a community. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments from council members?
Sure. Well, I'll go. I just, I have a couple of comments. Last week, I was able to attend the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and I just want you to know that our mayor was elected to the board, and, which is really great because representing Ogden for a statewide board, and, and is just, is really great. I applaud you for doing that. There was some sarcasm in there. No. But I also want to say that it's, it's really interesting because my day job and my night job sometimes get to collide, and I love it. And one of the things that I heard tonight in the, out of the consolidated plan was this, this area that's like third or fourth on the list of people not being able to have good transportation choices to their jobs. And so, I'm really excited to try to bring some of the concepts, maybe, and even policy from what I'm learning in my day job to maybe help with, with, to further some of our transportation choices. And so, Mayor, I look forward to, to having you, and you also sit on that WFRC board as well. So, hopefully, we can, we can take care of, or at least make inroads to some of that. So, just wanted to give that shout out. Good job. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Chaburka?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I also was able to attend, and I appreciate being able to do that because my day job and that kind of quite sometimes, too. But I really enjoyed especially, I went to several sessions around housing, I mean, housing. The one joke was like, really? Housing's a problem? Yeah, but anyway. And so, I got a couple of different ideas from those particular sessions, so I really appreciated that, but we can talk about that another time. And I just wanted to, you know, make a comment about the change in the ordinance that we were talking about earlier, and I guess, you know, obviously, I totally am, stand behind the charter in place and the work that we've been doing. But I do also just want to say, I mean, I think I made this comment before, that I think it's a real shame that it had to come down to like a state legislative action to ban certain words that we can't use any longer in institutions. But also, you know, I do think there's a misunderstanding sometimes about what, maybe there were some bad actors, you know? I don't know everything, but this is what I do in my day job, too, and there are absolutely disparities in outcome for particular populations in education, in healthcare, in all kinds of things. So, I'll keep working on that in my day job, and it always informs what I do as well, but I just think it's a real shame that it had to be enacted in the way that it was.
Okay. Any other, Councilmember here?
Chair, I would like to kind of make a mention that our neighborhood applied for and received a neighbor-up grant that our, they, it was put on Saturday, and I gotta tell you, there were people from every race that I, that live within, you know, several blocks of me, ages, all ages, from, from little to, we had a couple there that was in their nineties that showed up, and, and, and we came together in, in the same spirit of unity and love with, with everyone, and we got to, got to get to know each other a little better. This, the neighbor-up grant is a, is a, is a wonderful thing for neighbors to come together. And it does require people that are willing to roll up their sleeves and do a lot of work, but, but it is well worth it. We had well over a hundred people that showed up. We had activities from cornhole. Chair, I would like to kinda make a mention that our neighborhood applied for and received a Neighbor Up grant, that hour, they, it was put on Saturday, and I, I gotta tell you, there were people from every race that I, that live within, you know, several blocks of me, ages, all ages, from, from little to, we had a, a couple there that was in their nineties that showed up, and, and, and we came together in, in the same spirit of, of unity and love with, with everyone, and, and we got to, got to get to know each other a little better, this, the Neighbor Up grant is a, is a, is a wonderful thing for neighbors to come together, and it does require people that are willing to roll up their sleeves and do a lot of work, but, but it is well worth it, we had well over a hundred people that showed up, we had activities from cornhole to a new game that I'd never heard of, Nine Square in the Air, maybe some of you have heard that one, we had, you know, golf shoes, we had face painting, we had cotton candy, we had animal balloons for the littles, we had karaoke for everybody, it was, it was a hopping event Saturday, and so I, I hope people will recognize the benefit of those things, you know, there, there is a purpose that this was designed for, and it's, it's important that we don't try and game the prop, game the system, but it's, but if we do, if you use it for the, the reasons it was intended, it really is a wonderful thing for a neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. Okay, with, with that, we'll, at this time, consider adjourning into a closed session, this'll be the last time you'll see us tonight, we'll, if we, if we adjourn into a closed session, we'll adjourn from that meeting, this meeting, I say that, does that make sense? Hopefully it makes sense. So I would just take a motion to adjourn into a closed session.
Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn into closed session for one of the seven items listed.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Blair to adjourn into a closed session, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Graff?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye, all right, that passes, so thank you for being here tonight, you're, you're welcome to go ahead and disconnect from the meeting if you're, or you'll be disconnected, either way.